All right, we are ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, and it is a regular city council meeting. Notice is hereby given to members of the city council and the general public that at this regular meeting, the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. I see a former mayor out in the audience. Let me know how I'm doing. Roll call, please.
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan.
President.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember House. I will note that she is online. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. Please stand if able.
Councilmember Matthews, our mission statement.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan, our land acknowledgement, I mean Vice Mayor Aslan, our land acknowledgement.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you all. All right, we're moving down to public participation. Public participation enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that the item is discussed. Public participation appears on the agenda twice, at the beginning and at the end. If you wish to address the council at today's meeting, please complete a comment card and submit it to the recording clerk as soon as possible. Your name will be called when it is your turn to speak. And we have a clock up here, a timer. You'll see three minutes. And during public participation, the council cannot interact with speakers. So if we seem like we're just sitting here stone-faced, we can't interact. And something that I'm going to be enacting that I don't believe will come into, will matter for today's meeting is that the first public participation, we're going to take comment for 30 minutes. And then, because we often have people who are waiting to present, then we'll go through the agenda, and we will have public participation at the end as well. But again, I don't think that's going to pertain to today. So Jesse Ochoa.
Afternoon, council and residents of the City of Flagstaff. After filing a few police reports, I would like to attempt to set a motion to city council into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03 in rehuman trafficking of persons over 17 in the City of Flagstaff. That is all, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Givens.
How's it going, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council staff, and citizens of this great city? I'm here today to talk about funding the police force. I want the police force to be able to do jujitsu. I've talked about this before. And I really think that if we have money for LOL and the poets and yoga for firemen, we can also fund jujitsu for our police force. Because police officers that know martial arts are able to handle and control situations better. And studies have shown, you can look this up, they're likely, less likely to use their weapons when they know how to use martial arts. And also, it's a great exercise. It's like yoga on steroids, so they can get a lot of good exercise. And it's also good for mental health exercise. So I think it will help a lot of our officers have better peace of mind if they're doing martial arts. And a better police force equals less people, or a better police force equals more people want to be police officers. I know that some of the state troopers that I talked to, they're kind of understaffed. And if we don't have police officers, we're not going to have a safe society. I know if a madman ran in here today, I don't think any of the citizens would be able to stop them. I think the officer in the back, hopefully, will be able to protect us. So I really think that we need to fund the police versus defund them. And we could have programs like community outreach, so we can build public trust with the officers and the citizens. And also, I think we could have a homeless hangout where the officers hang out with a homeless person an hour a week. And that would create like a buddy system where you really get to know the people of the streets, and also the people of the streets can really appreciate the officers. And then also, I know last week that Jim McCarthy talked about funding Ukraine. And he talked about how a lot of his family members served in the military. My family has served in the military too. My grandpa was in World War II, my dad was in Desert Storm and the Korean War. But I don't think necessarily we should be funding any more wars. I really think that we need to focus on this country and have NATO and the Europeans, you know, get our back for once in a while. Because we really have issues like affordable housing, the homeless population is growing, and healthcare are really big issues. So I don't want to abandon our allies, but I definitely think that we should allocate our resources here first, and maybe let the UN and NATO get our back for once in a while. And also, I would think that if we had like a QR code that we could post around the city or make a magnet that people can put on their fridge, and that code could link us to a video of city council, more people could watch the city council meetings and be more engaged. And also, we should change it to 5:00 PM so more people can show up to these meetings. And also, we should make them shorter and to the point, so it's not like five-hour meetings. They could be like two hours, and more people would show up and more civil engagement. And thanks a lot for your time, everyone. Good job, everyone.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Tom Pearson. And Tom has a number of residents who are here with him. If you all are here with Tom Pearson, would you stand up, please? Thank you very much. And so, Tom, you will have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett and council members for allowing me to speak to you today. Recently, you received a letter from the Sustainability Commission opposing the Flagstaff First Petition that proposed you add wildfire, flooding, and drought as top priorities to the Carbon Neutrality Plan. I believe their opposition is misplaced and unwarranted. It's important to recognize that our petition is not requesting anything new. Rather, we are asking you to restore the top priority status you established in the 2018 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The CAP stated boldly and repeatedly that the chief environmental threats to Flagstaff were wildfire, flooding, and drought. Yet without explanation, the Carbon Neutrality Plan did not include these as a priority. And tragically, since 2018, Flagstaff has endured multiple massive wildfires and devastating flooding on the east, west, and the center of the city. Yes, many positive remediation projects are underway, but these are reactions to the ongoing devastation. Flagstaff has only one climate action plan, the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And because wildfire, flooding, and drought are not top priorities in that plan, we do not have a comprehensive integrated program dealing with these imminent threats. We need to stop playing defense and take the initiative to end the ravages of wildfire, flooding, and drought. Well, the Sustainability Commission's letter gave four reasons why you should reject the Flagstaff First Petition. First, they stated the CNP already prioritizes wildfire, flooding, and drought. Well, not really. The CNP's 162 pages only devotes nine pages to a single climate adaptation topic, and that was forest health. And it is listed in a subheading under Priority Four, Our Commitments. This single climate adaptation project, although critically important, isn't the comprehensive integrated program that Flagstaff desperately needs. The Commission's second objection stated wildfire, flooding, and drought are priorities of multiple current implementation projects. Well, this statement is true. Numerous multimillion-dollar wildfire, flood, and drought projects are planned or underway, and that's a great thing. But this only begs the question, why aren't these climate adaptation programs listed in the CNP under the top priority wildfire, flooding, and drought? Remember, the city's only climate action plan is the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Only last week, the County Board of Supervisors received a comprehensive briefing on the wildfire crisis in Coconino County. This two-part presentation covered both the physical and economic impact, a devastating wildfire, and subsequent flooding in the San Francisco-Pete's Upper Rio de Flag watershed would have. The study by J.E. Fuller, hydrology, and Northern Arizona University concluded that the combined damage and lost revenue would destroy nearly 2,000 homes and over 430 businesses for a combined loss of $2.8 billion. And yet, the Sustainability Commission maintains that wildfire, flooding, and drought are not worthy of being top priorities in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. The third point made by the Commission was Arizona Senator Mark Kelly hosted an Environment and Public Works Committee hearing on water and flood control in Flagstaff. Well, kudos to Senator Kelly for coming all this way to Flagstaff to address our critical wildfire, flooding, and drought challenges. Again, the Commission's statement begs the question, if wildfire, flooding, and drought in Flagstaff are topics worthy of Senator Kelly coming all this way to hold a special committee hearing, aren't the threats worthy of being a top priority in the Carbon Neutrality Plan? The Commission's fourth point stated Flagstaff First vision and goal for Flagstaff are derived from a perspective of climate change skepticism. Well, this statement is untrue. We are not climate change skeptics. We acknowledge that the climate is always changing. In the past, the climate has been both warmer and colder, and it is changing now. Although we are not climate change skeptics, we are carbon neutrality skeptics. We have stated, quote, "Every dollar we spend on carbon neutrality is wasted on making infinitesimal changes to the atmosphere." Our major point in this is that until China and India dramatically change their CO2 emissions policies, the US impact on the trajectory of global warming will remain insignificant. And I have a graph that documents this fact. It's a graph of CO2 emissions over time, from 1970 to 2022. And it's the CO2 emissions in the atmosphere that control the trajectory of global warming. So what is the status right now? The dark blue line is China. As you can see, since 1970, they have been on an exponential increasing curve due to building primarily massive number of coal-fired power plants. The US has shown a slower but steady decline in CO2 emissions. India is here in red. They are following China's lead, building carbon, coal-fired power plants as fast as they can. And so they are also increasing dramatically. China and India together make up almost 40% of the total CO2 emissions annually. The US is closer to 15%. Down here in the noise is Western Europe, and they're decreasing, but as you can see, it's not a significant factor. So bottom line is, unless and until China and India dramatically turn these curves downward, nothing we do will make a difference. Finally, the Sustainability Commission letter concludes by musing the, and this is a quote, "The Commission is curious whether Flagstaff First has organized their efforts in this citizen petition for the purpose of delaying Carbon Neutrality Plan implementation." Of course, the Commission was forced to resort to imagining because Flagstaff First has never called for a reduction in carbon neutrality funding. Rather, our goal is to restore a proper balance between climate mitigation, that is carbon neutrality, and climate adaptation. For us, that's wildfire, flooding, and drought. We must remember, climate action is not a zero-sum game. Moving forward in one area does not mean cutting back in another. A perfect example was Colonel Andrew Baker's testimony before Senator Kelly's committee. Representing the Army Corps of Engineers, Colonel Baker identified a new funding source from his office, the 595 program. He indicated this new flood abatement program was tailor-made for Flagstaff. Well, had wildfire, flooding, and drought been a top priority in the Carbon Neutrality Plan, I am sure the Sustainability Office would have had our applications turned in by now. Let me conclude by saying, like the Sustainability Commission, it is the goal of Flagstaff First to ensure Flagstaff's sustainability. We know from the county's recent studies that Flagstaff remains under current imminent threat of both catastrophic wildfire and flooding. Only by adding those essential components of climate adaptation, that is wildfire, flooding, and drought, as top priorities in the CNP, can the Sustainability Office carry out its true mission of comprehensive climate action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. All right, we have a proclamation for Red Cross Month, and I believe there are representatives from the Red Cross here in the audience. Okay, if you would come down and join us up here in council, if you would join me down here. This month, we honor the American Red Cross for its humanitarian commitment to serve communities across the United States and around the world. We celebrate each and every selfless employee and volunteer as an ambassador of American generosity who upholds a sacred mandate to leave no person behind. Founded more than 140 years ago by Clara Barton, the American Red Cross has led with compassion and care, assisting neighbors and fellow Americans when they find themselves in some of the most agonizing circumstances they have ever faced. When wildfires devour neighborhoods, tornadoes uproot towns, earthquakes devastate homes and businesses, hurricanes whip beachfronts, and rivers rise and ruin neighborhoods and city streets, Red Cross volunteers are there to provide food, create temporary shelters, and help people recover and rebuild. Now therefore I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to observe this month with relevant programs, ceremonies, and activities, and to support the work of service and relief organizations.
(Applause).
Two hours.
Two hours.
Right here, right here.
Right here?
Yeah, around.
Gotcha.
I left my notes over there.
No, no, that's fine. I can do it three seconds from memory, I think. Mayor Daggett, thank you, on behalf of the Red Cross council members, citizens, and volunteers. The Red Cross has been in existence 1,746 months, but this month is significant to me because this is my first occasion to receive the proclamation. The Red Cross is 18,000 employees nationwide. We have 265,000 volunteers nationwide, and we need more. Sarah Barton established the organization in the 1800s, late 1800s. The Red Cross International, Red Cross, and Red Crescent now covers 110-plus countries with the same mission, help people, be there when people need you. I've been with the Red Cross 23 years. I have seen the hurricanes. I have seen the wildfires. I have been reduced to tears because the way people had to be for a while, and we helped That's pretty much it. We need volunteers. We need donations. Donations come several ways. One of the most important to us is blood donations. Forty-five percent of the blood that is drawn, made safe, and delivered to hospitals and emergency rooms come from the Red Cross. A good share of our budget comes as a result of moving this blood into the hospitals. The easiest thing to do is a small prick in the arm, sit for 10 minutes, get up, and you're thanked, and you get a cookie. And you're part of the Red Cross operation. Mayor Daggett, council members, thank you again.
Thank you. And I will start with council, councilmember House is online. I'll start with councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. So a few weeks ago, the Housing Commission met to discuss some of the current home-buying market statistics and contributing factors, and have discussion of some possible options for the bond-funded homebuyer assistance program. So that was a very robust conversation that was setting the stage for conversation to come as they continue to advance those programs. The Commission on Diversity Awareness met as well to continue discussion of their, or the Flagstaff Pride proposal for colorful crosswalks, as well as engagement and upcoming partnerships with NAU events and upcoming proclamations. I also was able to join Flagstaff Pride for a vigil in honor of Nex Benedict, a trans-identifying student who was unfortunately the victim of a fight in school that later resulted in their death at a very young age. And so it was a humbling honor to participate and join them for that, that moment of just joining in solidarity with the Pride community. I believe I shared this last week, but last week I had to remote in, as I'm doing again today. But last week it was because I was traveling between Flagstaff and Phoenix for the swearing-in for the Arizona Commission on African-American Affairs. A few weeks ago, I was also honored to speak during a Black History Month celebration on the importance of local elections and local civic engagement. It was a privilege to speak to the engagement here in Flagstaff and represent our community voice within the broader state landscape, and I hope for other opportunities like that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of exciting things going on with Mountain Line, including the Downtown Connection Center progressing, and the administrative facility is on track to open in 2025. They also received another grant to complete construction of Phase 2, which includes the needed bus lanes and bus space, and that will help facilitate passenger transfers. So some really positive things going on. Thanks.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris.
Let's see here. Friday, I had the honor of attending the Women Resilience Project reception. That project identifies, I believe, 20 women in Flagstaff from different decades who have made significant contributions to our community and our city. That was in partnership with the Martin Springer Institute at NAU and also Cultural Connections. And so that was a really good opportunity to meet with community members and residents. Three of the people identified in that project were at the reception, and I'm not going to try and call all their names because I only remember two, and so I don't want to leave out the third person that was there. But it was a really good reception, and that display will be up until the end of March. And so that's my report. Thank you.
And is that display, it's up at Culture Connections?
It's up at the Ice House, so Culture Connections, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. For liaison reports, I too attended the Mountain Line Board Meeting. A lot of great things happening. We talked a lot about the budget and the five-year plan and impacts to rising insurance rates and minimum wage and mitigation efforts, as well as the joint water and council meeting that we had yesterday was very informative as we continue the conversation about water rate research and their suggestions. And then I also attended the Coconino Plateau Water Partnership Joint Meeting, talking all things about water and water resources and stuff. So it was a busy week.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back to me. I do have three liaison reports. The first, as the Chair of the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council, we did have our monthly meeting. The major item on the agenda was an update from ADEQ about the Northern Regional Office activities that are going on there. We got to meet the new person in charge of this entire northern region, and it was a really nice discussion. I was also at the Sustainability Commission meeting this past month, and we, the fiscal year '22-'23 neighborhood sustainability grant recipients presented to the Commission on the final outcomes of their grant projects. Some of the organizations the Commission heard from included Townsite Urban Farm, the Flagstaff Disc Golf, the Arboretum, and Flagstaff Youth Writers. The Commission also discussed and voted on the recommendation to council on the petition to revise the Carbon Neutrality Plan, and there was a discussion around the opportunities to get involved in the current phase of the regional planning process. One more update for you, and that is the Tourism Commission. We elected a new chair and co-chair, so Ellen Jimenez and Regina Salas are now our chair and co-chair. We got an update on the Chocolate Walk and the I Heart Pluto Festival, which was resoundingly successful. And the Diana Gavaldon event sold out at the Orpheum. More seats had to be made available for that one. I should probably do that more often. Presentation on the Discovery Center, which was really fun. I never get tired of those presentations. I've seen many of them. I was able to announce our sponsorship of the Planet Earth for the first time, and some of the folks at LOL hadn't heard about that yet, so everyone was very excited. We got a great reveal of the new Flagstaff film branding and marketing. And as I mentioned with Heidi last week, I think, during the city manager report, I can't wait to share that out, and I'm hopeful they can, it'll be presented at her next year. it'll be presented at her next update during the City Manager Report. And that's all I have.
Thank you all. I have nothing this evening. We will move down to appointments. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and the general public that we could vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public during this discussion. So the first is consideration of appointments to the Sustainability Commission. There are three, let me get back. There are three terms that are open. One expiring February 2025, one February 2026, and one February 2027. So when you make your recommendation, please indicate which term. First up to make an appointment is Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, again, very impressed with the applicants. It's really refreshing to see qualified people with a lot of great interests and backgrounds interested in these different commissions. I'm going to nominate for a term expiring February 2027. Noah Baker.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I am next up. And I will appoint to a term ending February 2026, right? Roger Skirlock. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we appoint Tom Lemey to the Sustainability Commission for a term that would expire in February of 2025.
Can I get a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Wonderful, everyone. Thank you for your homework on all of the candidates. Next up, we have appointment, we have one appointment to the Housing Commission. This is a specific seat. This is the Building and Real Estate Professional or Builder with a term expiring September 2027. And Councilmember McCarthy, you are the one with the...
It's my turn to make a motion. Thank you, Mayor. I move that we appoint Kevin Bond to the Housing Commission for the Building and Real Estate Professional seat for a term expiring in September 2027.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving down to Consent Agenda. All matters under the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine unless a member of the City Council expresses a desire at this meeting to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion. The Consent Agenda will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by the council are budgeted items. Council, are there any items you would like to pull to discuss separately? Okay. Hearing none, I will take a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Items 8A through 8F, the entire Consent Agenda for tonight.
Can I get a second? I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Moving down, Item Number Nine, Routine Items. Consideration of Motion to Reject All Bids. Welcome, Anya.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here today, this Anya Wendell, the City Attorney's Office. I'm here today on behalf of your real estate manager, Bryce Doughty. He and the, and some community development representatives are down at the Urban Land Institute today, learning all sorts of new fun things. So he asked that I cover this item today. This relates to some property the city owns in the Coach Field area, out in Doni Park. Here's a map. And there's two parcels the city owns. One is, I don't know if you can see these yellow stars, but the upper parcel is nine, approximately nine acres, and the lower parcel is about 12 and a half acres. They're both located in the county and zoned rural agricultural, which allows for a development of two and a half acres. I guess I should, this is, these are some remnants of a big, giant parcel of land the city owned. I guess that's attractive land, 540 acres. In the 1990s, the city sold most of that property, so we still have these two parcels left. And they are assets of the city's self-insured trust fund. And for those in the audience who are not aware, the city is self-insured and doesn't purchase insurance for everything, but they have this self-insured trust fund that helps pay for all our health insurance plans and benefits, as well as all of our losses and claims against the city. So this is a real important trust fund. The city, these two parcels are part of the assets of that fund. And so when the properties are sold, those funds, the proceeds from those sales need to be returned to the self-insured trust fund because that helps the city keep its, protects its employees and protects the city. So we've tried to sell it a few different times. There's this long and colorful history about the properties. One of them was a former ski, shooting range, and one of them was a racetrack, and there were tires buried all over it. But anyway, they're cleaned up now, and they're, they can be sold and developed. Here's just some pictures. You can see the area out there by Doni Park. Oh, beautiful day there. Okay. So, the city most recently went out to bid in 2022 for sale of the 12 and a half acre parcel and got one bid back that was about 15% of fair market value. So today, we're here just to ask you to formally reject that bid. The parcels themselves, they, we have appraisals, older appraisals for each dating back to like 2021, but the 12 and a half acre parcel at that time was valued at 600,000 acres. And I believe the nine acre parcel would be, you know, about 300,000. So hopefully over $1 million to reimburse the self-insured trust fund. So, as you know, we have, the council's adopted a resolution which requires the staff to consider whether any land being disposed of by the city should be developed for affordable housing. We did ask our Housing Section to look at this, and they determined that these were really not suitable for development for affordable housing, not only because they're, the zoning is rural, but also there's no, well, it's, they're connected to the Doni Park water system, but they're, they're on septic, and there would be a lot of development costs to go into developing these. So I don't know if you want to pause for a moment to ask any questions?
Do you happen to know the, if land in the county were to be rezoned, is this an area that could go down to one-acre lots? I'm, I'm, I think, if I remember correctly, the county doesn't have any zoning that's less than one-acre lots. Am I correct?
I am not able to answer that question. I do know that a few years ago, when we were looking at this...
Anya, I'm fairly certain that's the case. I believe that is the case. They don't have anything less than one.
Thank you. I mean, that's another reason why the affordability issue is an issue.
Right, why it would be difficult to develop for affordable housing. Yeah.
And is there a, is there an agreement with the trust that we have to receive a certain percentage of the appraised value, or we have to receive at least appraised value?
Mayor and council, it's my understanding that the city hopes to return about at least $1.126 million to the trust. I believe that was the city's initial investment for these properties and related environmental remediation costs.
Thank you. And is there further remediation that needs to be done on either of these parcels?
I do not believe there is.
Okay. Council, questions, comments? Councilmember Harris.
Just out of curiosity, do you have any idea what that parcel with that zoning could be used for?
They can be used for residential lots. They're currently two and a half acre-sized lots. Also farming in that. It's rural agricultural, so.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Item 9A. And under staff recommendations, that would be Number 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving down to B. Consideration and Approval of First Amendment of a Construction Manager at Risk.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Eli Reisner, City of Flagstaff Capital Improvements Project Manager, here to provide a brief presentation on the Spruce Wash Amendment 1 to the C-Mar Construction Services Agreement. In this presentation of Amendment 1, I'll be going over the projects, the costs, the schedule, and community involvement. Again, this is for the Spruce Wash projects shown here on the map. Projects 8, 1 through 8 are Proposition 441-funded projects. Kilip Inlet is funded through the U.S. Army Corps projects. Parkway Basins is a county flood control district project funded by NRCS. Now I'll take a look at the projects included in Amendment 1. Construction of the suite of projects began in September 2023 with GMP Number 1, which included Grandview Phase 1, the underground utility portions of the Grandview project, and the Wedge Phase 1, the clearing of the Wedge project. Amendment 1 adds GMP Number 2 to the C-Mar Construction Services Agreement with Eagle Mountain Construction for the Spruce Wash Flood Mitigation Suite of Projects. GMP Number include, GMP Number 2 includes the following four projects and/or phases of projects. First is Grandview Phase 2, the roadway portion of the project, which consists of constructing or reconstructing the street with an inverted crown, replacing the existing roll curb with a taller and wider roll curb, and replacing portions of the existing driveways. Second is the Linda Vista Crossing Project for the construction of a new box culvert and inlet for the wedge detention basin storm drain, and relocating the existing water and sewer mains so they are not in conflict with the new box culvert. Third is Linda Vista to Cedar Channel, Phase 1, the franchise utility portions of the project. This includes the tree removal and grading required for APS and Unisource Gas to relocate their infrastructure in order to construct the channel improvements. Fourth is the Wedge Phase 2, the utility portion of the project, which includes the associated water and sewer storm drain improvements in Linda Vista Drive, West Street, and Cedar Avenue. The majority of the improvements in the suite of projects will be constructed within city property, in-city right-of-way, and/or within the existing public utility and drainage easement along Spruce Wash. Property acquisitions, additional public utility and drainage easement, and temporary construction easements are not required for the work included in GMP Number 2, but will be required for some of the projects within the suite, which will be finalized and obtained as design is completed. Now, onto the costs. The original agreement for GMP Number 1 was $2.9 million. GMP Number 2 is $7.4 million with an owner's contingency of $185,000 for the total of Amendment 1 and the amount of $7.6 million, which increases the total contract price to $10.5 million and adds 180 days to the existing 845-day contract duration for a total of 1,025 days. Next is the schedule of the projects within Amendment 1. Grandview Phase 2, the roadway portion of the project, will be constructed from the spring of 2024 through the summer of 2024, with the goal to be done prior to monsoon season of this year. The Linda Vista Crossing Project will see construction from the spring of 2024 through the fall of 2024. Linda Vista to Cedar Channel, Phase 1, the franchise utility portion of the project, will be constructed from the spring of 2024 through summer of 2024. The Wedge Phase 2, the utilities portion of the project, will see construction from spring of 2024 through spring of 2025. Now for the community involvement in the project. There have been 18 council and/or community meetings related to Spruce Wash with an additional community plan for this spring. To date, 11 project notices have been distributed to the areas adjacent to the project. Weekly e-newsletters are emailed every Friday to over 500 subscribers to provide updates and information about the project. There is a project website, museumfloodprojects.com, with project information and a link to sign up to receive e-newsletters that can be accessed using this QR code. There is a project email, info@museumfloodprojects.com, and a hotline number, 928-255-5123, to ask questions regarding the project. Beta PR has played a huge role in the community involvement aspect of the suite of projects. And Eagle Mountain Construction has been very involved with the coordination and communications with the residents, business owners affected by the construction. Eagle Mountain Construction, Beta PR, and city staff will be intimately involved with the coordination and construction activities in keeping stakeholders informed on the schedule, sequence, and impacts during construction. Does the council have any questions?
Council, any questions? I will say that I heard from a resident on Grandview, and they said that the contractor has been very accommodating.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
All right. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Item 9B with the staff recommendations 1, 2, and 3.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Moving down to C, Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance 2024-05. Welcome, Mr. Overton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Overton, Public Works Director, speaking to this topic and ordinance that... that Bryce Doty has presented this evening. He is out tonight. This is the final read of an ordinance that would authorize the acquisition of two parcels that are adjacent to the Spruce Wash that we are using for the Killip Inlet project. Those exact parcel numbers are in your packet, and I'm here to take any questions, but this would allow the authorization of that purchase.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, moving right along, I move that we read Ordinance 2024-05 by title only for the final time.
Can I get a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Killip Inlet as part of the Spruce Wash Channel Improvements Project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Can I get a second to adopt? I mean, a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt ordinance number 2024-05.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving down to our regular agenda. 10A, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-08. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Jennifer Caputo, I am the interim Deputy HR Director for the city. And I'm here this afternoon to talk about a handbook amendment related to our retiree insurance program. We are looking at modifying the language to clarify that our insurance program for retirees would be for those that were hired on or before July 1st, 2024. I'd like to give you just a little bit of history to tell you why we're doing this. I think you all know we're a part of NAPEPT, which is the Northern Arizona Public Employees Benefits Trust. And the NAPEPT Trust Board has been working on phasing out our benefits package. The reason for that is that in the past, the Arizona State Retirement System also has a retiree insurance program, but they didn't offer the the network and the services in the Northern Arizona region. Over the years, they have developed a program that is more comparable. So the trust started evaluating whether or not they wanted to continue our program. So some of the things that the trust members did is went back to their boards and their employee commissions and committees to get feedback. They also asked the ASRS Provider for Medical Insurance, United Healthcare, to conduct a network disruption analysis that looked at the top 20 inpatient facilities, 50 outpatient facilities, and 100 professionals that were used by the NAPEP members. And what it was determined is that there would be minimal disruption to services for those retirees and their insurance. We also surveyed current employees and new employees from the previous two years and asked them if, when they made their decision to work for the City of Flagstaff, if part of that decision was related to having retiree benefits at some point in the future. That was not a consideration for those employees, so the trust decided to move forward with phasing out the program. The program under ASRS is comparable in nature. They have four different plans, including one plan that would serve the needs of retirees that live outside of Arizona. They have Delta Dental and Cigna for their dental coverage. The other benefit about the ASRS program over the city, the city's program, when a retiree becomes Medicare eligible, they're no longer eligible to stay on our insurance, but with ASRS, they would be able to continue even after they become Medicare eligible. They, retirees would also still be eligible through through ASRS for a subsidy for their insurance. That's with our current program, and that will continue with the ASRS program as well. And there were some other benefits that the program offered at no to low cost, including virtual doctor visits at no cost. There's a weight loss program at no cost, tobacco cessation program at no cost, Silver Sneakers Fitness, and some hearing aid savings. So can I answer any questions?
Counsel, do you have any? Councilmember McCarthy?
This is all kind of complicated. Tell me if I'm right or wrong here. Retirees that work for the city now, after they retire, they will still be eligible for some medical insurance.
Correct.
But after this goes into effect, they will not be eligible for medical insurance. Am I misreading it?
Our current employees, our current employees and current retirees will maintain their eligibility. This will only impact those people that are hired on or after July 1st of 2024.
All right, so we won't be offering that kind of insurance to new employees, and that's, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I just want to make sure the council understands what we're doing here. Just as a footnote, the company I worked for for 26 years, when I worked there, we got an insurance, we got a retirement program, and now there is no retirement program at that company. So that's kind of the trend. And I wonder what Shannon thinks about this.
I just wanted to confirm that they still would have retiree coverage. It's just going to be through ASRS instead of through NAPEP. So just as they have the opportunity to enroll or decide what they want to do, they'll be able to do that with ASRS.
Okay, that's a big difference. I appreciate it.
Sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Well, thanks for coming to the meeting tonight, Shannon. It was worth your time.
It's good to see you.
Any other questions? And could you repeat what you said about reaching out to candidates and to people who 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 might be impacted by this?
Yeah, so what happened was at the NAPEP Board Meeting, the Benefits Committee had talked about how to communicate this to employees and also to find out feedback and and really if we wanted to move forward with it. So each of the agencies conducted a survey that was sent out to current employees, current retirees, and new hires to find out if it was something that would make or break their decision to come to work for the city or the county or the school district.
And the answer was no.
Correct.
All right. Any additional questions? Or Councilmember Harris?
So let me see if if I understand, excuse me, what's happening. I repeated last night. So when a person comes to to work for the city, they go into the NAPTA?
NAPEPT.
NAPEP program. They don't go into the ARS, Arizona State Retirement, whatever?
Well, when they come to work for the City of Flagstaff, they get their insurance through the City of Flagstaff, which is a part of the NAPEP Trust. So when the employee exits the organization through a retirement, they have the choice to elect the City of Flagstaff insurance through the retiree program, which basically means they continue on our insurance program. So what this would mean is that they would, for our current employees and those before June 30th of this year, they would maintain the ability to elect that insurance. Those that are hired after July 1st, 2024, wouldn't be able to stay on the city's insurance, but they would be able to elect through the Arizona State Retirement's retiree benefits.
Okay, so this is just about insurance, not about retirement?
Yes.
Program. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I am ready to entertain a motion if someone is ready to make one.
Mayor, I move that we read Ordinance Number 2024-08 by title only for the first time.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Chapter 1-14 Personnel System by amending the Employee Handbook of Regulations, Section 1-70-030, Retiree Insurance, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, moving down to B. Consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-07. Welcome, Rick.
You don't want to read the whole thing?
No, I am not reading that whole thing. But Stacy will.
I will in a little bit. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer for the City of Flagstaff. Today, we have a first read of an ordinance requesting the opportunity to issue debt on behalf of the City of Flagstaff. And always, first off, I'd like to say it does take a team to do a proper financing and deliver the best rates and product. And with me today, I have Mark Reader with Stifel Nicolaus here with me, as well as Paul Gales with Greenberg Trard, who is our Bond Counsel, Financial Advisor and Bond Counsel. And online, we have Bill Davis, Erica Coombs, who will be our underwriter team for this issuance. So a great group, A-plus group, to help us get through this bond issuance with this round. We're not intending to talk about projects with this adoption. This is really just about the financing and getting the cash flow for the projects we're already talking about and delivering. So 10A is the authorization to issue new general obligation debt related to our November 22 ballot measures that were approved by the voters overwhelmingly, a very good approval rating, as well as refinancing some existing debt that we look to get a better return and some savings to the secondary property tax fund. Voters approved just over $57 million to invest in wildfire suppression, stormwater flood mitigation, and wastewater infrastructure. So that's one of the issuances we're going to have, and we're requested to issue $30 million of that issuance. We don't want to issue the full amount upfront. We want to wait till the cash flow makes sense and issue it closer to the need of the cash as we go forward. The second series is going to be for, related to the $20 million approved by voters, related to creating rental and homeowner, home ownership opportunities for residents of the City of Flagstaff. That was the ballot measure for $20 million. This will be a taxable debt that we'll issue because of the nature of how we're working with businesses and delivering those bond funds and using those. For this issuance, we're looking to issue the first $10 million, so about half of that housing bond debt with this issuance, if authorized. The last one is for authorization considering refinancing existing debt. Our friend Stifel run the numbers, and they've seen a few debt that do have a callable nature that we can call and refinance with new debt if it is favorable in our financial conditions. If it's not favorable when we get to market, we're not going to do this. But currently, we do look to save about 1% on those remaining bonds, which could be about $270,000 in cash, cash flow for the secondary property tax. So we'll continue to watch interest rates, and as we close, we'll determine if we're going to issue those debts, which I hope likely we are and have those savings. General obligation bond debt is paid back by secondary property tax assessments, the levies that we bring in from the secondary property tax. And issuing this debt is expected to maintain our 0.8000 rate. That was a promise, or what we expected during the publicity pamphlet. We said we're going to try our best to keep it at that rate or below. We should be easily be able to do that with this issuance. So today's staff is recommending that you read Ordinance 2024-07 by title for the first time.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Tatter?
Or really hard ones for these guys?
All right. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we we read Ordinance Number 2024-07 by title only for the first time.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona, one, providing for the sale and issuance of City of Flagstaff, Arizona, general obligation bonds and general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series, and for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds. Two, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of necessary agreements, instruments and documents related to the sale and issuance of bonds. Three, delegating authority to the Mayor and Management Services Director of the city to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing as well as certain matters with respect to bonds being refunded with the proceeds of the sale of the bonds. And four, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to consummate the transactions contemplated by this ordinance and ratifying all actions taken to further this ordinance.
Thank you. Could you read that one more time?
Sorry, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much, Rick, and thank you, Stacy. All right. Moving down to item 11A, Future Agenda Item Requests. This is a request by Councilmember McCarthy to place on a future agenda a discussion to consider a resolution in support of the aid bill for Ukraine to be sent to the city's congressional delegation. Councilmember McCarthy, would you like to say something?
Mayor, thank you. I did prepare some notes and a brief statement. Our country is always stood to protect freedom and fight fascism. Ukraine is the largest European country, except for Russia, of course. Ukraine, our European friend, is under attack by Russia. We need to continue our support for a free Europe. We need to send supplies to the brave men and women that are fighting to protect their country and protect Europe. We need to, we need to send supplies to other nations. Excuse me. We need to send supplies so that other nations don't fall to blatant aggression. In the 1930s, countries like the United States and England looked the other way when the Nazis attacked Poland. When the Nazis started bombing England and after Pearl Harbor, we realized that looking the other way was a mistake. Most Americans agree that we should send supplies to Ukraine. On a bipartisan basis, the U.S. Senate just voted 70 to 29 in favor of an aid bill. However, there is concern that the U.S. House of Representatives will kill the bill. I respectfully request that this council consider sending the resolution to Congress, a resolution in support of the aid bill to Ukraine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have Councilmember Matthews and then Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy and I have had a little bit of a dialogue back and forth. I think we all agree that, you know, we want to support Ukraine. But this kind of steps into staying in our lane. I think from what I've read and understood, the opposition is, and I love this quote that my pastor in the past used to always say, this light that shines the furthest shines the brightest at home. And right now, I think there's opposition for that bill because of our border crisis. And until we take care of our home security, I think that's where a lot of the pushback is, not to mention some of the reports of mishandled money not going to what it's intended. All that said, that's a political opinion, and I don't see either side of the the House voting on this quickly because it's such a politically charged conversation, unfortunately. It's a presidential year, and so they're going to leverage this to their political gain, not to help on gain, not to help on humanitarian efforts. This is going to be a really divisive year. We already know that because it's a presidential year. And we make decisions every Tuesday guaranteed that there's going to be a group of citizens that aren't happy with us on what we do. And I think that, you know, we do our best to stay focused on local issues. Making proclamations or sending letters on topics that are on a national or global theater platform is just poking an unnecessary bear. And as much as I support funding and support to Ukraine, I don't think it should be in our purview. And we've got another petition coming up next week that I'm going to have the same sentiment on, so I will not support the letter for those reasons.
Sure.
Well, first of all, I almost called you Lori. I'll call you Lori. I just want to thank you for the good dialogue that you and I have had about this, and, you know, and some of it we agree on and some of it we don't. I do think it's very unfortunate that this issue has become politicized. This has nothing to do with the border issue, as you and I have talked about. I think you and I are probably on the same side of that issue. And there's no rational reason to link the border issue with aid for Ukraine. I guess I'll just finish by saying, it's really sad to me that the security of Europe has been politicized. That is really sad. I'll just say one last thing. I'm really worried about this country and this world. Enough said for now.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for bringing this forward. My heart goes out for this conversation, and I think it's a challenging one because I think we are in agreement that this is a global concern, and it's a tragic event that's happening. I just wanted to express that my reason for not supporting this fair item has nothing to do with the merits of it. It has to do with the potential conflict that I think it creates in terms of equitable support of other concerns. When we think about the other global conflicts that are happening right now, looking at what's happening in Gaza, looking at what's happening in the Congo, looking at other concerns that are growing in global awareness and concern, the question becomes, are we going to do similar action for every topic that comes before us? And just knowing that that is such a weighty responsibility that falls outside of our typical responsibilities as council, that's my hesitation in sending a resolution. That said, I do want to express that, Councilmember, if you are considering writing a letter to council or to Congress, excuse me, I am 100% on board with signing it. If you want to propose the writing of support from other members of council, I will start drafting tonight. But that is to say that I support you on this call for that partnership. I simply can't support the call for a resolution. So again, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward and know that I stand with you in considering the importance of this, and just hope that we can come up with alternatives for showing that support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll stay brief. Councilmember McCarthy, I support your fair. I am a yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. This is a very tragic event, and I'm glad we're having the conversation. But I do agree with a couple of my colleagues that this isn't really in our lane, and I do support this. I would sign on the letter if it's drafted, separate from it being official from council. And I do support your idea, but I unfortunately can't support the fair. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I couldn't get to my chat. I have a lot of respect for Councilmember McCarthy and for your experience on council. You bring things up that some of us probably wouldn't think about just because of your experience, and I appreciate that and I value that. But unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support this fair. But I too would support a letter that is not official, but that is, along with my other colleagues, giving my support to us assisting or getting our Congress to do the right thing. So, thank you.
So, Mayor, just to clarify, it sounds like I'm hearing some support that individuals, as individuals, would send letters in, but that would have nothing to do with an official letter from the city or the council?
That is what I am hearing as well, and count me in on that aspect. But I'm also not going to support moving forward with a resolution. I can't say any better what everyone has already expressed to you in terms of respect for you and also agreement about this issue. And so, as a resident of the City of Flagstaff, I would welcome the opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I hear what council says. I'm disappointed, and I'll just say that I have no regrets about bringing this forward. I think history will show if Congress makes the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember House has a question for City Manager, and then I'm going to take some online comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, this seemed like a good opportunity to circle back because we've had these conversations in the past regarding things that are or are not within the lane of council. But providing this sort of a letter of support as individual council members or other things like that, and I'm wondering if the City Manager can take this as an opportunity to speak to our ability or capacity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll let Sterling speak with any input that he may have, although I think we're kind of united on the response that I will give you. This has come up before in instances where council has been requested, either upon your own initiative at the dais or through citizen petition, to render a statement regarding affairs that would be considered global in nature but not local to the City of Flagstaff. In those instances, we have advised as administration, and again, Sterling can speak on behalf of the Legal Division, to not be involved in those in terms of, you know, the expenditure of staff time or staff resources, simply because it's not city business. We do that to stay in accordance with our city charter, which speaks to the duties of my office as manager and the entirety of the administration that we work with. And it's also something that, in my capacity as City Manager, in accordance with the code of conduct that I follow, that is set forth by the International City Managers Association, is keeping a distance from these discussions and not having involvement in them is in alignment with that code of conduct. All that said, that's just an explanation of why we at this staff level do not involve ourselves in these. And if there is a decision by council to move forward, that is entirely within your prerogative to do so and to also decide not to do so. Should council elect to either write a resolution or letters, you certainly have your Chief of Staff who can give you assistance in that. We just respectfully ask at the staff level that we, again, keep a distance from it. These things don't occur with frequency, so I appreciate the opportunity, Councilmember House, to explain our position on it. And we always respect the position of council. And in avoiding the conversations, I want to also say, as one last comment, that is in no way indicative of where we at the staff might stand on these very important topics. It's really just a neutrality that we strive to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay. So, and I was in error. The public comments are for public participation. So, we have given direction from the council, and thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for giving us this opportunity to have this discussion.
Yes, and I would thank all the members for the respectful conversation we've had. And Ms. Davis, and I want to especially thank you for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Moving down to public participation, we have some online commenters and staff, if you would just announce their names. Great. Thank you, Mayor. First this evening, we have Rex Udin. Rex, you may unmute and address Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have a resolution to propose, but first, there's a little bit of groundwork I need to lay as to why I feel like my resolution has merit. Since 1965, the posterity of America's founding population has gradually been overtaken by a historically unprecedented wave of immigration from all the world, which share no connection with American heritage, culture, and history. This massive demographic change impacts American life on a grand scale. Part of this change has included increasing animosity towards fair-skinned people as the new groups of migrants compete for resources and political power. As white birth rates have fallen below replacement levels, this means that future generations of white people in America and all historically white nations will become a targeted minority in their own homelands within the next 20 years. And in fact, white people under 18 are already the minority in the United States. As national diversity increases, social trust and community participation decreases, and groups form based on their own shared history, heritage, language, and culture. Ethnic biospirit helps these communities remain cohesive, but also serve to generate power to work in their own interests, which are often mutually exclusive to the interests of founding stock Americans. The first step in becoming an advocate for the health and well-being of the white community is understanding what is happening to our people, how it started, and what groups of people playing leading roles in promoting anti-white hate speech that we see throughout the world today. I would like to recommend a couple of documentaries to learn about white replacement and the historical events that the anti-white media establishment wants to keep hidden from unsuspecting white people. That is Defiant by Devon Stack and Europa, the Last Battle, which you can find at europathelastbattle.net. I will conclude my prelude to my resolution with a quote from Joseph Sobrin. "Western man towers over the rest of the world in ways so large as to be almost inexpressible. It's Western exploration, science, and conquest that have revealed the world to itself. Other races feel like subjects of Western power long after colonialism, imperialism, and slavery have disappeared. The charge of racism puzzles whites who feel not hostility but only baffled goodwill because they do not grasp what it really means, humiliation. The white man presents an image of superiority even when he isn't conscious of it, and superiority excites envy. Destroying white civilization is the inmost desire of the League of Designated Victims we call minorities." I would like the council to put forth a resolution declaring April to be White History Month. With Arizona being on the front line of the flood of immigrants into our nation, I feel like we need to respect the people that created this nation, the Europeans.
Thank you. Next speaker? Mayor, next we have Fred Lucher. Fred, you may unmute and begin your comments. Mayor, I'm not getting a response from Fred. Our next speaker is Jim Conley. Jim, you may go ahead and unmute and address Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm appalled and disgusted at the concept and idea of putting forth a resolution, saying that we want to send more of our hard-earned pay to fund anybody's war, much less the one in Ukraine, or we don't even want to fund the terror state of Israel, who is currently bombing women and children daily. We're fed up with all the foreign funds that are leaving our country. People can barely afford to put food on their table and gas in their car, and you all want to send more money to some foreign hostile entity? What's the matter with you people? None of my friends, family, loved ones, coworkers, neighbors, and Flagstaff want anything to do with funding any foreign entity. You are not representing the people of Flagstaff. You're representing your own personal, private interests, and it's disgusting that you want to bring that forth as a formal resolution. How dare you? I'm so disgusted, I can't even think of anything else to say. It's just disgusting, and you are not representing people.
Mayor, technically, this was part of the fair, and it was on the agenda, should have been spoken to at that time.
So what? It's general comment, and I can speak to it now? Don't interrupt me. So that's it? No more money for anybody and deport all...
Mayor, sorry about that. Next, we have Mitzi Behe. Mitzi, you may unmute and address Mayor and Council. Mitzi, can you hear us? Mayor, I'm not getting a response from Mitzi. Last on our list, we have Albert. Albert, could you please unmute and go ahead and address Mayor and Council?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead.
Great. Thank you. I have a little speech here I wanted you to read. "We are tired of being ruled by those that hate our very existence. We cannot coexist any longer. We must separate and peacefully expel all enemies of the white race. Our future will either be of God, nation, and family, or of degenerate filth. We are in a moment in time where we still have a choice. Pick a side. Will you stand for the right of the white race to exist, or do you stand with the pedophilic Marxist Jews? Our people have built this nation, European empires throughout history. We can and we will arise from the ashes. Adolf Hitler was not hated for so-called Jewish genocide or tyranny. He was hated for being the enemy of communists. At all costs, he made sacrifices for our people to take a stand against Bolsheviks, communists, and enemies of God. He wanted a future for our people, for us to live in peace and a world free of filth. It took all of the communist Jewry and other scum uniting to keep us enslaved. General George Patton was quoted as saying, 'Gentlemen, I have come this morning in an excusable conclusion that we have fought on the wrong side. The entire war, we should have fought with the fascists against the communists and not the other way around. I fear that in perhaps 50 years, America will pay a dear price and become land of corruption and degenerate morals.'" I may, we may have lost that battle, but we will win, and we will set our people free of Zionist occupation. It should be legal for the ADL and others to lie about the Holocaust. It simply didn't happen. Gas chambers were for delousing of fleas. There were no Jew-skin lampshades. There was no soap being made from human remains. Schindler's List and all the other propaganda films were simply holy Jew wood. Anne Sprenz's diary was written in ballpoint pen, which didn't even exist until after the war. The famous book Night by Eli Wiesel was a total fabrication. He claimed babies were used like skeet and shot in machine guns, that the Jews were burned alive in other asinine acts of violence. Historians have proven these claims false. Six million Jews did not die. Diakon B was never used. If the events were true, they wouldn't need a pass law to stop people from questioning it. Truth can be investigated. Only someone with something to hide would try to silence anyone who wants to examine the so-called facts. The real genocide was perpetrated by Jews in Ukraine from 1920 to 1933. Marxist Jews starved 16 to 20 million people. Men, women, and children...
Mayor and Council, the comments... Mayor and Counsel, the comments are not part of the agenda. Technically, they are part of, you know, something that is public participation. However, if you determine the comments to be obscene or offensive, you have a, and he was bringing up the Ukraine. That said, it was a separate item. It's up to you as...
Yeah, let's move on to the next speaker. Terrific. Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker just joined us, and it's Chad Bestwell, and then Mitzi will be going after Chad. Chad, you may unmute and begin your comments. Chad, are you able to unmute? All right, Mayor, we will go ahead and call on Mitzi. Mitzi, are you able to unmute now and go ahead with your comments?
Hi, can you guys hear me this time?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Phenomenal. My name is Mitzi Bape. My goodness. I had something completely different prepared, and then I heard about the last letter that you guys addressed, drafting and then sending. So I hope it's okay that I talk about that since it technically is open public comment.
No, this should have been addressed during the fair discussion.
You can clarify for the speaker if there is something that is not, that was not on the agenda. She can speak to that.
Yes, if you want to speak about something that's not on the agenda, you can go ahead.
Okay, well, that's fine. I can do that. I guess I would like to talk about the war in Ukraine, not necessarily the letter you're drafting, but the war in Ukraine. I find that a lot of times when we do bring this up, Nazi Germany is brought up, and I find that really odd. Because when you think about it, I mean, think about the time period then, right before Nazi Germany, that moments before that same...
With all due respect, Mayor, the comments are referring to what the discussion was, and it would have been during that time that it would have been best to approach and address...
No, I'm talking about Ukraine.
Thank you, City Attorney. Do we have any other online comment?
No, Mayor, that's our last online comment.
Thank you. We have an in-person commenter. Dennis Givens.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council.
You're all fucking kikes. Disgusting fucking kikes.
Woes and the staff and City Council. Wow, this is the most interesting meeting I've been to. It's, I'm so sad that there's a lot of hate speech going on.
Hate speech is faking gay.
Yeah, being a person of mixed race and white and Korean, I feel like, you know, there's definitely, everyone has good and bad things about their groups. But I think as a world, we should come together and respect each other for our great things that we bring to humanity. I guess I'm a Jew because I'm a mixed-race person, but I just want the world to be free. And I'm sorry that I spoke on Ukraine earlier because I didn't know it was on the agenda. And that's not, you know, you're not supposed to speak on something that on the agenda unless you sign up for it right after. So sorry for like, not being in quorum. But yeah, I definitely think that Russia is not a friend of freedom and...
I'm going to have to say the same thing to you about this as the other speakers.
Okay, all right, cool. And I just want to say I respect Jim McCarthy. I respect everyone here. And I really hope that we can bridge our differences. And no nukes. We don't want any nuclear war. And hopefully, North Korea is free. Peace out.
Unless there is any objection from council members, I'm going to skip over informational items to from, and we are adjourned.